And basically.
Pull your pants up, it's good going.
Stick around for eight years.
I had a great-grandfather every year at every family together Easter. Oh, this could be my last one. Yeah, and he might have ten more to go. Crap, do one thing.
Oh, no! Red truck crossing the way.
Yep.
Okay, good. Oh, wait, farm, so I feel like we're...
Jump in the gap.
Patrick, did you... you heard about the stream from the last meeting, right? Somebody said it cut out or something.
Was I trying... oh, I was trying to watch... was it last week, Planning and Zoning Commission one?
Maybe that's what it was.
I could not get it to go. I was like, dang, because I was at work, I thought, I can listen to it and do my work. Nope. Hey, Craig.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Six thirty-one.
Yeah.
It's good. So everybody's here, which is a good sign. Now it's time for the open forum, so if anybody has anything they'd like to address the council for, it can come up and identify yourself, and then go for it.
I'm Bobby Collins.
Yeah, you probably don't need to be that close. I don't know exactly how it works, but Patrick's got it.
And I'd like to address the city council about parking, and also I'd like to talk about parking, and then I would like to talk about parking.
So let me get that straight. Okay.
So as you may have heard, we had a situation during Fisherman's Picnic, because as the vendor coordinator, we had vendors that had to set up on First Avenue West, and there were cars parked in the street that were preventing the vendors from setting up. And I had posted, I'd gone around that morning and posted signs, "No parking after 3:00 PM", and it was a situation that, I mean, it might not have been my fault, but it certainly was my problem to solve. And we had vendors that were, they had their merchandise and their stuff on the sidewalks, and they couldn't set up because the car was blocking the egress. And the sheriff was there, tried, we tried everything we could to locate these people. We went into all the business establishments multiple times, the Lions made announcements, et cetera, and the owners of the vehicles could not be located. And so finally, what I had to do is reassign vendor booths on the fly, and we finally had the vehicles towed. They started at 8:00, 8:30, there were two vehicles. And I was down there at 9:00, and one of the owners came, and he was madder than a hatter that his vehicle had been towed, and by his own admission, he'd been parking there for seven or eight hours. And it was really unfortunate, because, you know, we didn't want to have to tow vehicles, but these vendors, you know, and a lot of them had just busted their butts to get there on time so that they could get set up, and it was a very unfortunate situation. But it also, there is a culture that we can park wherever we want to, there is no enforcement, you don't have to pay any attention to signs, and the, you know, the 90-minute parking signs that are there are not enforced, it's well-known. Later on that weekend, I had someone who seemed to be a local. He parked his Goldwing, right blocking the emergency lane, and he was drinking a beer at the Beer Garden, and insisted that he didn't have to move his motorcycle and clear the emergency lane, because he knew the sheriff. And I keep hearing this story from all these people, the sheriff must be a really popular person, because there's this culture that we don't have to follow any of the laws, we don't have to do anything, because they know the sheriff. So I guess I need to get to know the sheriff, so I don't have to follow any of the rules. But I think having parking ordinances that are not enforced, you know, makes that culture, or reinforces that culture of, well, we don't have to follow any laws, because they're not enforced. But the signage also, you know, I felt sorry for the guys, because way down at the end of the block, there was a sign that said 90-minute parking, but there's no other signs along there. And so signage is important, and enforcement is important. But with the small amount of parking that we have down here, it's absurd to let people who are staying here for a weekend overnight park in the streets overnight. And I am very supportive of vacation rentals. I've stayed in them many times, in many different places. That's how I ended up here, was my dad stayed at a vacation rental years ago, and then he built in Cook County, and I ended up here. But for instance, there's, like, Bluewater has a sign that says it's reserved for somebody staying in their rental upstairs. But in my situation, like, I have two other women, we have our chick trip every year, and all three of us converge from different places, and so we have three vehicles. The city has that property up there, the Tom Taboda, I don't know what you call it, but there's lots and lots and lots of room for parking, and it doesn't have to be paved and marked. I mean, we use that grassy area for radio waves parking. If there could, you know, the city has that, and unless the city can find a mining company in Argentina that wants to set up a copper mine in town, or what, this is our industry, and it supports us, and the city needs to consider the, you know, the part, where people are going to park, and to be able to use that lot, and whether there's shuttles, or, like, for instance, I was thinking, like, for Art Fest, I volunteer my vehicle to help move stuff downtown. I would volunteer to be a shuttle to and from downtown, up, you know, for three, four hours, or something like that, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if you need a permit for that, but I know there's Uber and Lyft and whatever. But at any rate, I think it's time to think creatively and figure out how to solve the parking problem, so that people can come in and spend their money and support the local industry. I guess that's all I can say.
Okay, thanks, Bobby. We talked about some of that stuff at the last council meeting, and we're working with the chamber too, to work on some innovative concepts for how we can work on, well, actually, identify and then hopefully put something together that will solve those issues that you've identified. So, thanks for all that. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, this is Mike Shmaya. I'm here to talk about your recent Facebook survey. First off, my house was on there, and I have a completely messy yard. I will own it 100%. I'm too busy running a business and working two other jobs to really worry about the shame and humiliation. But what I will say is that this afternoon, I was contacted by an attorney who has another person, and they want to file a class action lawsuit over it. Where my concern here lies is that whoever did this, and I'm not an attorney, whether I know it's legal or not, but there is an attorney that thinks that what was done is illegal, but opened our city up to litigation over some "I want to shame you or humiliate you" tactic on Facebook. So my concern is that we already pay a fortune in taxes, and lately, there seems to be this open checkbook at the city. So now we're into another situation where, should something happen, whether it's legal or not, if this attorney wants to pursue it, it's going to cost money for the city in litigation, regardless of whether the city wins or loses. Should the city lose, I think there needs to be some accountability. In any organization in this world, if you bring litigation to a company, and you cost the company money, and you cost them a bunch of money, your resignation's asked for. And if you choose not to resign, it's up to the board of directors to either fire you or demote you. So, like I said, I'm not upset about my house being put on there. What I'm upset about is that we're this small community, that our taxes keep going up year after year after year, and that there's something like this that opens us up wide to litigation. So, that's about all I got.
All right, well, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
And we're gonna, I believe in...
It's still up, it's hilarious.
Well, and we're gonna talk, I've talked with the staff, and I think Kelly and maybe a couple of you guys have as well, talked to the staff about this survey and the response, and I believe that we're gonna get an update on that.
Finish open forum first?
Yep. Either right out here after open forum, or else some staff reports. So you're welcome and encouraged to stick around for that. So, anyone else for open forum stuff? Anybody?
Me.
Okay. Come on up, tell us who you are.
Andrea Ores. And first, I would like to formally say thank you for painting the crosswalks in the school zone. Beautiful. Second, as a participant in the Highway 61 Steering Committee, I just wanted to be brought up that at the MINDOT meeting, somebody had asked if the Steering Committee or the city was going to take responsibility for this recommendations, for the tree pruning and care on the report that they put out. It recommends temporary fencing, root cutting, pruning, et cetera. And, I mean, it wasn't really a question for MINDOT, because it's not their responsibility, so I just hope that somebody has got that in the back of their mind, that if that's in the recommendations and the plan to save those trees, that somebody's thinking about it.
Yeah. Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody, anybody? All right, hearing nobody, then we will close the open forum. So, Patrick, do you want to address this now, or do you want to wait till the end?
I think we should do our agenda, don't you?
I mean, that's, we had planned on doing it in staff reports, so that was the, that was, we could stick with that and go through the agenda.
Or add it as its own separate item.
We could do that in the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with adjustment to the agenda to address the Facebook survey.
Okay.
Right after, or right before E.
Right before E, so right off the bat. Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second for that motion?
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Carries? Okay, so then that is now our official agenda. So, you, we're gonna say a few things.
So, I don't know if you've seen the Facebook survey, or it's not a Facebook, the survey that is on Facebook and on the city website. We've collected a pool of images that represent things that people think contribute to the community, detract from the community, or are neutral. And we've asked people to look at the images and determine if they contribute or detract from the community. That's the gist of the survey, the information that we'll get back from that helps us determine what level of upkeep or maintenance to your, to properties the community expects, and that's the gist of it. I don't know if we have any specific questions, or...
I'm gonna move forward, because I had the conversation today for understanding. I saw it online, and I was like, oh, what's this? Hadn't heard of it. Obviously, there's a firestorm on Facebook. And I understand some of the people's feelings and reactions. So I called and actually spoke with Mike, and I said, can you just tell me about this? Since we didn't talk about it here, give me some background. Obviously, our number-one priority that the council set and agreed upon was going to be working on our ordinances and zoning. So Mike said, this is a way to discuss and figure out what are we gonna want to work on based upon this. And we had a really good conversation about it, so I said, I'm gonna bring this up tonight, if need be, so that we can share with people. I don't know that it's gonna detract some people from being angry. I get, there is, to me, I know that you did not mean to shame anyone. That's not what this is about. Because if I looked online, I think I took about two-thirds of it and finally went, okay, I gotta move on to something else. There are definitely things there that I look at and go, yeah, I don't like that in my community, I think it takes away from a neighborhood, and there's things that I go, yeah, I would love to live next door to that, if so be it, or see what it looks like. So, I don't know if you can explain it the way Mike did, or if Mike needs to.
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Just a quick clarification.
I think it was helpful, what you said today.
Patrick is helping with this effort, but this is something that you can just look to me if you want to assign responsibility to this being done and going out. This wasn't Patrick's decision to do this, so all the work he's done on it has been very excellent. The idea that code enforcement was the council's top priority is something that we've been working on for a few months to try and determine how to address. And some of the things we thought right away were, we don't want to use the words "code enforcement" when we start talking about this, because that's a solution, it's not a problem, and we don't want to assume that code enforcement is the solution that you're gonna decide to use. So, instead, we looked about at code enforcement and tried to determine what are the issues that it generally deals with. And if you look on our token board that's in the city hall lobby and has been traveling around to different locations, there's a written list of those issues on there that people can vote for if they so decide. But we also wanted to give people an opportunity to talk about positive things, because it's not necessarily going to be ticket writing and code enforcement. It might be programs that try and encourage people to do more of the things that we like and do support the community. Or it might just be us deciding that the issues that we thought were issues the community's telling us really aren't. So, that's how the survey's designed, to give people that opportunity to say, this detracts, I'm neutral to this, or this is something that I want to see more of. The whole idea of talking about code enforcement is, you should not be surprised that there are strong feelings that are evoked, and I don't think that's something that we want to try to avoid. I think that if we do that, we're not talking about the issue the way it needs to be talked about. And if we don't want to talk about the issue at all, that's okay too, then, you know, we can move on to other things, there's plenty at work. But eventually, this conversation is going to get to the point where we're talking about specific properties. And so, there isn't any avoiding it, if we want to really do this right. We end up talking about specific properties of people that live in this community that are doing things that the community has decided through the council and through the city code that it doesn't want to see. Or, we're out there working with people, with programs that we've decided to implement to help get to the places that we want to see. So the difference between the two tools that are out there right now is the one online gives people an opportunity, strangely enough, to say, you know what? I like that particular thing. And people are, of course, we're not gonna talk about the results until we close it, but people are not all agreeing on everything, and you wouldn't expect that they would.
So the Facebook thing is the same, that same, like the token, like the poker chip thing that was in the office?
It's a similar idea. There aren't words, it's all images. And Patrick mentioned this, but the way that we went about creating it was, we asked a bunch of people to go out and just collect images. And we didn't tell them what to do, other than give us 10 that you think contribute to community health, 10 that you think detract from community health, and 10 that you're kind of neutral about. And then we took all those images and selected 100 of them to put out for people to look at. So, yeah, could we use images from another community? We could. I don't know why they wouldn't want to sue us then. I don't know why we would eventually have to talk about the same sorts of things here. You know, there's nothing about the data that's being collected that is gonna lead us to go out and write tickets for people. Right now, we might not even decide that that's the right solution to address the issue. But what it is gonna do is help us figure out what are the issues that the community does care about and wants to see addressed.
And that's, you know, understanding, understanding where we've started, and understanding that this is a tool to get to a goal, you know, and it's very clear, you know, we're getting very, very pointed feedback about this particular tool. And that's something that, you know, we as the council, for setting that priority and, you know, and directing the staff to work on that, we own this as well. I think that Mike put that well, when he said it in his comment. We also have to, we have to take a look at the fact that the city code hasn't been redone in a very long time, in dozens, decades of years. And that really, we are starting over, as far as what the expectations of the community are. This was an effort to get to what the expectations of the community are, and it's...
Yeah, you can go.
No, I just was wondering, so the, I guess, it's on the city site and it's on Facebook, is that the thing?
There's a link to it, yeah.
Link to it. And it's, but it's, you can, any image could be perceived as positive, negative, or neutral, depending on what your personal...
And I want to thank Mike for being pleasant to come up here and respectful. I'm gonna speak a little bit about the dialect that's out there, and when I chose to run for this, I knew what was coming. I have had no email, I have had no phone call about it. So, I'm not sure if people don't want to, if it's easier to hide behind a keyboard and say the really awful things that they're saying. And I will stand behind my staff, I'm with Jay that we have set priorities, and I'm happy to talk to people about it and move forward. Again, I don't think it was meant to shame anybody. What I might think is art versus what probably Mike, who is more an artist, would be different. If the whole town looked like I wanted it to look, there's gonna be people that disagree with me. There's a lot on there that because people pay property taxes, they should get to do anything they want. And when I think about that, I don't know if it's people out of anger, but I also think that we have to go back and remember what it is to be neighbors to each other when we live within the city. I'm not a drug dealer, but if the drug dealer next door to me pays taxes, do they have a right to live there and operate, as long as they're maintaining their yard and doing things, and they're not bothering me? If their children are clothed and fed and going to school and everything's hunky-dory, do I have a right then to say the drug dealer doesn't belong there, because they pay property taxes? And I'm willing to have these conversations with people. I don't think that because I write a check twice a year, it gives me full-out rights to do whatever I want. What I think we need to do is have dialect. If you don't like something, then I wish people would reach out to all of us. Sometimes I have people that just come to me, and I say, hey, I'm one person, thank you for sharing, but you gotta go talk to four other people as well, if you really want your wishes known. And I think we need to have a respectful conversation. Most of the conversation that I'm reading on Facebook, and the one particular feed that I saw was a majority of people who were not city property owners. And somebody said, yeah, I saw that, why do they think they have a voice? And yet, I want to hear voices, because this is home to all of us. Doesn't matter to me if you're local, I don't know how people define local anymore. I really don't, because the generations that were born here are becoming less and less. It doesn't matter to me if you moved in two weeks ago, then I think you get to have a voice about where you live. And what I've told people through everything that I feel is happening, and the conversations I have, that even though we're on different sides, I think people are trying to do their best to make this to be the best Graham Ray. It's just we have different ideas of how to do that. And sometimes I'm gonna have to concede to somebody whose idea I probably am not on board with, and sometimes they're gonna have to concede to mine. Again, I'm not a super-big artist, I don't know much about art at all, and Graham Ray has become an art community. Doesn't make it wrong, just because 50 years ago, when I was living here as a two-year-old, it wasn't. It was a logging and fishing community. We don't have a lot of that industry left here. So, I just, there's no one here to talk about it tonight, other than one person who could have come before us to say, hey, tell them us more about this. So if there are people that are watching or see this, then let's have a respectful dialogue. But if all you want to do is sit on Facebook and run somebody down, or run people down for trying to do their best, I'm probably not gonna listen to too much of that. And I appreciate that people come before us and have the conversation, or say, hey, like I did with Mike today, I said, can you tell me about how this got going? Because once I start asking some questions and really listening to what other people are thinking, I can find some underlying things that we all have commonality on. So, I hope that we can move forward, I hope that we can get some good results from this. If people come back and say, you know what, okay, great, the idea is wonderful, can we take down the local pictures and put something else up? I'm not opposed to that either. But again, what I may see as beauty is not what somebody else does. That's in the eye of the beholder, right? So, nobody put on the page what they think each picture should be, we never labeled each picture, we asked what the individual thinks of it. And I guess if you're saying we're shaming people, shame is negative, so I'm taking it that people are seeing some of the pictures there as negative, or things that they don't like, and that's something that they have to address. I also have people that talk to me weekly about certain people's property by name, but they won't talk in front of that person, or go to their neighbor and knock on the door and say, hey, I've got a problem here, is there something that we can do to help? Or can you tell me maybe when this RV will be moving because of this? Or, hey, you've had this dumpster here for six months. You're right, there are a lot of people that work really hard, lots of jobs, and are stressed and doing different things, so maybe we need to be neighborly and ask what we can do. I don't know. But I hope that we can have some nicer conversations than what's occurring out there right now.
Yeah, and, you know, I do think that there is some addressing, there's some addressing that, you know, some conversation that the city has to have with some folks. And I have received a couple of messages from people that have proposed, you know, adaptations or other ways to get at the information that we're seeking to get. And that's the kind of feedback that we really need. You know, like, we need to have productive suggestions for how we can achieve a goal. I mean, we've identified a goal, we have this charge that we want to pursue, and we need to figure out how to do it effectively, and to gather information that's accurate, you know? I mean...
Well, because it shouldn't just be us deciding what the ordinance should be, it's, that's the whole point, is community input.
Right.
So, look at it. When's that come, when do we get to get that information? We don't know. Yet. Like, when that survey will end?
No.
How long has it been up?
Three, four days.
Since Friday.
Okay.
Yes, so we'll continue monitoring the situation, and, you know, we're definitely looking to gather the right information, so I hope that helps in understanding. Does anybody have anything else? Questions or any comments or anything about this that want to talk about?
The only comment I have, if, in reading the comments, some of the comments, I didn't read all of them, but I started reading some of them. Because of the pictures of local-owned properties, I'm just having a hard time thinking that we should leave it up. I think maybe we should take it down. That's my opinion. I think there's some negativity that's brewing, and like you said, then where are the people? Well, one guy showed up, he came and talked to me in the store before this meeting, and very nice about it, but I don't think he's the only one that's thinking about talking to everybody about this. So, I'm just wondering if maybe we should reconsider how we're doing this? Maybe there's different images from other cities, other towns, I mean, I don't know, I mean, this is our town, we're trying to get at our... I know what we're trying to accomplish here, I just think...
Do you give me a piece of my phone?
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, it's, you know, I can sit here like, a few weeks ago, we had photos, and I'm saying, "Okay, I know who owns that property, I know who owns that property." And I'm thinking, you know, I don't know if I want something I own up there, I mean, you know, I'm just kind of thinking, maybe there's a different way we can go about that.
Yeah, and...
I don't know, I'm, I'm, that's just my feeling about it. I mean, we can still accomplish some goals here, I just think that maybe it created something that probably sure as heck weren't ready for, or something, I don't think I was ready to read stuff like that, but I did, I read it.
Right. And, and I, I, yeah, the, the, the feedback for this is something that caught me very, very much off guard as well. Partially, partially because, you know, I'll take complete responsibility that I didn't, that I wasn't, I wasn't dialed in enough to know what the, like, what the efforts were going to be, you know, like, what the survey was going to contain, that kind of situation. I'll, you know, I'll, I'll either blame that on the summer or blame that on whatever, you know, blame that on just me. I'll take that one. And I, I keep vacillating wildly back and forth between like, 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 yeah, these are, these are the, the pictures of our neighbors, uh, you know, and, and we need to respect our neighbors' privacy, we need to do that sort of thing. And then, like, to the other side of it is, is like, well, this is like, literally exactly what we're talking about, you know? Like, these are, like, some of, some of these, the examples that were given are things that, that the city has received complaints about. And, you know, that's, that's not something that we're saying this is bad or good, this is something that the city is asking the community, like, is this legit? Like, we need the community to tell us, like, is this legit? Because, because, you know, if we do work on ordinances, if we do redo ordinances, then, then that's something that the city's going to be stuck with. Like, it's, it's something that's going to be codified for the city. This is a, this is a big deal. Like, Mike said that this hasn't been done for the 18 years that he's been here, because it's a big thing. So, so, you know, like...
Is there like, I think, is the, the biggest issue is that there's like, things are pretty supposed to be negative, neutral, or positive?
No.
Right? I mean, some people, like, see, I just remember the thing that was in the office, there was a picture of a seagull, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that positive, negative, or, I mean, I guess...
Depends where you're standing.
Well, then, it's, it's the eye of the beholder.
But then, I mean, I see, I think that's the point, though, because, I mean, I haven't seen the picture of Mike's house, I don't, I mean, I know where Mike lives, but I don't drive by Mike's house and think like, ooh, you know what I mean? Like, that's not, but, but that would, you know what I mean? So, it's one of those things where if the feedback from that was like, neutral or positive, then the impact of what the ordinance and how the ordinances would be written, maybe we'd be like, you know, we do get a couple calls about people cleaning up their yards or whatever, but the bigger issue isn't that, because we only had, whatever, six of 100 were negative towards this, and actually the ones that seem most important might be RV parking, or it might be, you know what I mean, trailers in the street, or whatever it is. And that's what that information gives. I mean, I feel like that, the, the process, I don't know, I mean, who knows?
Or if we get a strong, we can get a strong indication, if we get a strong indication from this, that people just want the city ordinances to, to deal with, with safety and not with aesthetics at all, you know, like, you know, then, then that's, that's what, that's the information we're getting, that's the information we're going to work with. And to, like, to, to use Mike, because you've identified that your property was in, in the survey, like, when you're, when that picture came up, I'm...
I haven't seen it yet. I haven't even looked at the survey. I got contacted by his attorney.
Okay.
But, one thing quick, and I'm gonna leave.
Okay.
There's, there's 150 to 200 stock imagery services out there.
Right, there are.
If you can pull stock images all over, there's this thing called the internet, you can get stock images all over it. So, that's also a solution to keep us out of litigation, but if we're going to be tough and keep the survey up, with the pictures of the people in the community, sounded like this guy that I talked to today, he's pretty serious. So, you guys, good luck.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Is this an open discussion?
Uh, not particularly. The open forum was, was beforehand.
Would you prefer that I take my comments to the paper?
Um, that...
You guys cannot do what you do. I don't know who made up putting papers in the survey. Part of my doctoral study was learning how to do surveys. Those pictures identify people in this community and call for us to make judgments on those pictures. There's a picture of one family's home on the top of Broadway, we live in a double-wide trailer, there's a bunch of children pictures up here, and you're asking us, does this, what's the word, detract from the community or add to the community, basically? So, here's a family home with a picture clearly of a small family with young children, and you're saying, does having a family in a home where clearly a family lived detract from our community or add to our community?
Well, I mean, the, the, how, how would you answer that question, Dale? Would you say that, would you say that that adds to the community?
Whoever develops, I know about writing surveys to know that that is not a good one. That's not the way you do this. You provide oblique, neutral questions that people make decisions about. You don't provide things about neighbors. I've heard all day long, all day long, people saying, "Who in the world would call us to pass judgment on our neighbors? How do you develop community by tearing community down, Jay?" I don't understand why, why you folks who are struggling so hard to figure out what community is would do the exact opposite of what you're trying to do.
Well, I, I'm going to take away, I don't struggle, Dale, to decide what community is. I know in my heart what I feel community is, and I'm only going to speak for me. There are homes and things that I know I don't want to live next to, and I don't have to put the list out here, but there's reasons I don't want to live next to homes or properties. And then there are properties that I would like to live next to. That's judgment. We all have judgment, we all have opinions. That's human nature. I agree that, I agree...
There's an individual preference, but go ahead.
I agree that maybe we could have used different pictures. I think that maybe we probably should have done that differently. So, is not to point out. But again, I have so many people that come to me and use names of the homes and the properties that they don't like, that they think are awful, and can't understand why we aren't dealing with them in the city limits, that they're okay saying to me, but they're not going to go look at that person and say, "Hey, John, this is a mess, how can I help you, or do you recognize what this looks like and what it's doing to my property as a neighbor?"
So, you say that, talking to the neighbors? Because if you don't, you're not building community.
That's, that's usually the response if you call, if you call and ask Mike about something, the first thing he says is, "You should go and talk to your neighbor."
That's a great strategy.
It is.
A great strategy.
Yeah, this wouldn't be an issue if, if everybody was capable of treating each other with respect.
But this particular patrol survey is not accomplishing development community. It's not give, first of all, it's not clear what you're actually looking for, but secondly, it's, it's causing people to, to make judgment calls against neighbors without knowing what the, the reason you're doing it or what the outcome is going to be. I think it's a poorly devised survey.
I think a survey that you understand what you're being asked for, and you understand how your data is going to be used, is a terrible survey. You can't design a survey where everybody knows exactly what they're doing, otherwise what purpose did it serve at all? What do we think code enforcement is? This is the community making up rules for itself, by itself, that they intend to use to pass judgment on each other. That's what code enforcement is. I don't know how, if you want to do it, you have to be willing to...
Be uncomfortable?
Look, definitely be uncomfortable. It is an uncomfortable issue. And, and if you want to not use local pictures, I would say, take a moment to think about why that is, and if it's just because you feel uncomfortable, then I would recommend against it. If you think that we can honestly have this conversation without ever talking about individuals in this community, I would love to see how that could be done, but I don't, I don't currently understand how we would do that. At some point, just take this to its logical extreme. We have a rule, we intend to enforce it, we're going to enforce it, that person's going to be here in front of you all where you're passing judgment on this camera, you know, in perpetuity, where we're going to be talking about whether or not that rule is passed. That, so that we're having that similar thing happen right now, where we don't necessarily say we have to pass judgment. I think this is still helpful. And I don't know why we would try to avoid the, the difficulty of it.
I, I struggle, I struggle a little bit with that, but I also, I also would know that there's, yeah, that there's, you know, one of the things that you did say was, is, rings very, very true to me, and that, that is that, that this is, this is not, this is not a fun topic. Like, this is a topic that the, that the council identified as its number-one priority, and, and how we go about getting to the, getting to the crux of, of what the community wants, our, our policies and our, our law enforcement agreements to enforce, like, that's, that's deep, deep stuff. Yeah.
Excuse me, give me one exception, I'm going to ask you to make another.
At this point, I think...
At this point, you will. Can you change the photos? There is plenty out there that is copyright-free, that would get you the same response to the image. Then you're not picking on people, and you're not setting them up to be picked on by other people in the community. I have no problem going personally, going to my neighbor and saying, "I have a problem with this, can I pull your weeds?" But by singling people out, if you put everybody in the community up there, there'd be no discussion, other than the fact that it was, no, it would be too many, but...
There'd be discussion, too.
There'd be discussion.
Right, well, I don't know if my house is there, but I'm going to go home and check it, because I don't want it on there, and I'll let you know. But the other thing is, can you talk to other communities and find out what their codes are and discuss them? You know what the properties are that you get calls on? Are those things that you wish to pursue? And if people are going to be sitting here, is this going to be before you make a law or a code? Or is this after the code and it has to be adhered to or it's been broken?
Well, and those are things, those are things that are so far down the process, like, that's not where we're at. Like, we don't know the answers to those questions because we're here.
Well, right now, just from what I've heard here, you've put people out there, and him, Mike in particular, has a response that has generated evidently significant involvement from the community at large. That's not fair to him. It's not fair to his family, and it's not fair to anyone else out there, because though he may not be looking at it, they may or may not be attacking. And for tho, you know, I have a lot of flowers, there's a lot of weeds in them right now, but people might make comments about that, I really don't give a damn. It's my yard, if you want to pull weeds, come pull weeds. If you don't like it, let me know. But there is no code in this city about my flowers or my weeds.
Oh, we have a code book!
Yeah.
But it's very, very old.
I've been here...
There is a, there is a code about, about weeds, actually, and there is a weed inspector. Do you know who that is?
When was the last time that was taken?
This guy.
That's what, that's, and that's what...
I was going to say, let's talk about right across the street from Burge Terrace. The weeds, the evasives, it's, I mean...
This is where the conversation breaks down for me, because we don't want to single people out, but then we immediately do.
Right.
And we have to.
But the point is, you've done it, and now you're saying it can't be done?
I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying it has to be done.
No, it doesn't have to be done on the individuals in this community. You can get to that and then address the individuals. But until you get to that, it's just putting stuff out there for people to get angry about. I'm just saying.
And people can be angry, I think that's a perfectly acceptable response to things.
I'm not opposed to people's anger, I'm opposed to people being angry at an individual without addressing it first.
And I think the difference between having an image on the website and having a thousand people drive by the same view every day is kind of immaterial. Why is there...
Driving it by, driving by it, if they don't address it with the individual or with you as a city council, then it's not a problem.
So, you already have an ordinance on the books that you're trying to...
Well, we have an entire city code. And then, that's the thing, is that, that we've received over, oh, I mean, I've, I've been mayor for four years, right? And, and over those four years, have we received, I mean, not a, not a humongous amount, but, you know, dozens of, of complaints about, about ordinances that aren't being enforced, or different, different things that are, that are present in the community that, that really bothers people and, and detracts from their, from their, from their well-being. And, and those, those things are things that, like, we need, we as a, as a community, not just the council, not just the city staff, but we as a community, need to understand if these are the things that we really, do we want these enforced? Are these ordinances, do they even matter? Like, are these, are these things that we, that we should trouble ourselves with or not? Because, and, and that's, that's what the survey was trying to get at. I, I can totally agree with what you guys are saying about, about using photos of properties in our community about this, I totally get that, like, I really do, and I feel really, I feel so incredibly torn about it. I also, I also wonder, you know, this is an opportunity, it could also be an opportunity for people to, to weigh in and say, "This doesn't bother me."
If you have a code already, it must have been important at some point, rather than try to remake it, why don't you try enforcing it?
That, that's the whole point. That, that's the whole point of why we're doing this, because we're trying to renegotiate our contract with, and our, our agreement with the law enforcement. And the way that the code is written, I mean, it talked, I mean, it's 1972 boilerplate, like, it's not, it's, there is certainly things that we have added, that other councils have added, and ordinances and things that have changed. So, there are things that are more recent, but what? A huge percentage of what is written is, it's outdated, and it hasn't been, I mean, it's, 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 and so, we don't want to start to tell law enforcement that, you know, go and, go and enforce, you know, this, this code, that, it, it is weird. I mean, the, the RV parking, okay? I park my RV behind my house. I live on a corner lot. I'm fully behind my house, guess what? If you live on a corner lot, I don't have a rear lot, I don't have a rear yard, everything is side yard, so I'm in violation, even though it, by looking at it. So, this is the point that we're trying to do. There's clarifications that need to be made, and I feel like it's the best, we can do the best job when we reach out to ask the, the city and the residents that live in the city, what is it that impacts them? What is it that impacts their daily life? And sometimes it is as simple as going and talking to your neighbor, and sometimes you can talk to that neighbor six times and they're like, "Nope, not going to do it." And so, if we're gonna, if, if, I mean, ultimately, right, that's why there's laws, that's why there's things, because if it was as simple as like, Kelly says, like, "Yeah, you know, I want to help you out, what can I do to help you out to make this better?" Some people don't, they don't want the help, or they don't, you know, they don't care. So, I, we're trying to get to a clean slate that, that it's on our agenda, city code update proposal. The city is proposing not only putting it out there, but putting it out there in a way that's, like, updating things, but putting it out there so it's searchable. I talked to law enforcement about noise things the other day, they're like, "Can we call you back?" So, they called me back like a half hour later to try and find, after searching through stuff in the code, about like, what's the best really route to go for? I mean, you know, because there is no, the language probably was written before there was such thing as jake breaking, right? I mean, so like, it's outdated, and so, it's, it's all about making it so it's usable for community members, it's fair, right? Because that's, I think, what it should be, it should be fair, and it should be not just picking on any, like, it, it's not about picking on, to me, it's not about picking on individuals, it's about, it's about, it's about fairness and about equity and how those things are done. So, if we have new codes and things are written clearly, then to me, the enforcement actions can be done in a, a fair, a fair way, because things are accurate and up to date.
Well, enforcement actions can be done, period, to me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the, I appreciate that you all have adapted... I think the, I appreciate that you all have adapted to this conversation. But I think that one of the struggles that we're having now related to that is, in a small population, we cannot identify all those properties. All right, so, you're, what you're wanting us to decide is whether or not they're problematic generally across the population.
Yes.
And I understand the struggle there. But the disadvantage you have in a small population is that nobody can hide. And so, what you're hearing, at least what I, what I'm hearing, what I, because just before I came, I didn't know you all were still meeting, but I got this note on Facebook and somebody asked me, they were doing that same thing, Kelly, you mentioned when I came in, they were having this long, getting more and more hot discussion on Facebook. And my response was, "You need to talk to the mayor," and after, I thought you wrote the survey, so I can step in your direction, too. But the whole-
He's the communication guy.
He can, he can take it.
He can take it.
But, but the whole, the whole thing was, what you're hearing is, we know who these people are. So, you're not just giving us a scenario, you're making us pass judgment on our neighbors. And that's, that is a characteristic of an intimate community. These are not just situations, these are people. And you're asking us to deal with people that, if I wanna drive by some of these people's houses every day and notice the leaves and I don't care and don't say anything, that's my choice. You're asking me not to make that choice anymore. You're forcing me to pay attention to that. And in a small intimate community, I might not want, I might not want to break that relationship because that's what, that's the glue that holds, glued together, is the relationship. And I may not wanna break that over somebody's golden rock.
Well, I don't break a relationship over weeds, like you're bringing up, if my neighbor wants to come. Weeds, I had a neighbor that didn't mow because they liked, I think we called it hogweed. I always said, we used to call them the Indian paint flowers, but hogweed, dandelions and daisies. And they enjoyed it, let their yard grow. We don't. We have a manicured yard. We like it that way. I don't know who's right or wrong. I didn't like theirs, but it doesn't make them wrong. I also didn't go knock on the door and force the issue that you need to mow your lawn. I'm gonna go back to a stronger problem. If somebody's got four RVs parked in their yard that are from the 1970s that people are living in in the winter, they're covered by tarps, or you know that you got a drug dealer living next door to you, are you gonna go knock on the door and say, "Hey, can you not sell drugs out of your house anymore?" I'm not gonna-
We, and, and we have to be careful, too, about, you know, like-
But, there are laws for that. You know, we don't have to discuss it. You can pick up the phone and call 911.
We, as a council, need to, like, we need to also keep this in focus and we need to make sure that we can accomplish the rest of the, the rest of the agenda items that we have for the evening. So, I, you know, as, as far as this is concerned, you know, I, I believe that this was put on the agenda so that we had an opportunity to hear from Patrick, to hear from Mike, to, to, you know, to, to bounce some ideas around, to hear from the public again about, about this, this situation and, and what people are feeling about it and to get some more information out there. I feel, I feel like, like I understand Dale, where you're coming from. I understand what you're saying. I understand the, the, the importance of, of, you know, of, we have a pretty intimate community here. And that's because, you know, whether or not people want to have an intimate community, you know, the way that our community is makes it, makes it something that, like you said, people can't hide from it. I also have a lot of trust for our community, for, for people in our community to be able to, you know, to kind of put their money where their mouth is. So, so that's, that's something, too, to go, that I fall back on. As far as, as far as what actions are gonna be taken with, with the survey itself, I think that, that we're gonna, like, the city, all of us guys are gonna have to powwow about this or else I'll talk with these guys and, and we will, and we'll, we'll discuss again to see what it is, that, the action that should be taken going forward. But, you know, those kinds of, those kinds of actions, we need to, we need to really think about that and we need to figure out what we're, what the right steps are for moving forward, so.
Let me just thank you, because I'm gonna go to that with S Y's. I wanna thank you for the respect that you just showed me, to allow me to come in and disrupt your meeting. I appreciate that. I wanna recognize that, that that happened. And I thank you that you're taking the struggles seriously.
Yeah, well, we, I, it's, it's hard not to identify that, that there's, that there are strong feelings on this. And so, now, now begins the, the, you know, we have a, we have a goal to accomplish. How can we do that best that serves the community, that gets the information that we need and that can get us to our goal?
I just appreciate the respect you just took, so thank you.
All right, thanks, Dale.
Thanks, Dale. Yeah, I just kind of wanted to thank the people that came and, and did express their concerns about this. I mean, I have to tell you that I have not seen the survey, I'm not on Facebook, so I'm not aware of this level of, you know, issue that's, that's kind of floating around the community. I've been out of the community for most of the last month and, you know, so I haven't even run into anybody or, and I can tell you, I haven't had any emails or calls either, so. But I think, you know, the issue, as I understand it, is people's concerns about the survey and, and if it's the proper mechanism or means to, to get to what we're looking to try to achieve. And, I mean, we know we've got a, a big project in doing city code update and trying to, to, and getting back to taking a look at that bigger picture. I mean, how are we gonna do that? I mean, this seemed like maybe, might been thought of as a good mechanism to help us address some of that. I mean, we know that there's gonna be hard issues to deal with, especially when you talk about creating a set of rules that are gonna have to be enforced. You're gonna call out individuals, you know, by name, you know? They're gonna be subject to, to compliance. And, I mean, if, if that's our intent, which I think that's what we, we talked about, we want to develop a new set of rules that work for the community, people that can't follow those rules are gonna be called out. You know, it's gonna result in the same kind of, I mean, I've done enforcement and I understand nobody likes to have an action, an enforcement action brought against them. You know, it's better to be neighborly and get compliance, you know, through other means. But my, my hope is that with the conversation I've heard tonight is that maybe we could suspend this survey until we could come up with, you know, a clear understanding of, within the community, not just the council and, and staff. Because, I mean, I don't fault the, the staff for, for doing this. I mean, it's not, that's not an issue. But I think that it might be a disservice at this point to have the negativity that's, that I've seen to be hearing going on on Facebook. I mean, it, it doesn't serve us well. And I'd throw that out for other council members' thoughts, you know? I mean, I would be open to considering some kind of suspension of that survey with maybe ideas of maybe how else could we accomplish the same objective without specifically using that survey.
I feel like it's the, we wanna do public engagement because we want the public's opinion on how it is. Chris weigh in on any of that? Does, could he weigh in on any of that, now or later, on what we do?
It's right there, you can ask him, I guess.
Chris, what are your thoughts on this?
You're gonna have to repeat the question, I couldn't hear it.
Well, just, yeah, what, after listening to all this, what's your opinion on, on that? I mean, if it's as simple as like stock images, you know, off the web? Or do you keep with images from the community?
Uh, you know, I think I'm gonna wanna take a look at that. And it's something I can talk to Mike about after the fact.
Okay. I think that that's, I mean, I think that's a fair place to leave it, to say that we need to, you know, talk to Chris and get some-
Then maybe until we have, and again, I don't fault administrative staff at all. I, I guess maybe like Tim said, until we have a better understanding and in order to maybe, I don't know that I'm gonna say doing the right thing because truthfully, the conversation that I have seen and I don't see at all has really been bullying. And I'm, I'm not really good with that. If somebody's gonna come at me, you're not gonna do very well in a conversation with me. You wanna talk to me, talk to me, but bullying doesn't work. But I think in all fairness to the members of our community right now, and I'm willing to have hard conversations, I really truly am. This isn't easy and I think we all knew that when we stepped up to the plate to put our names on the ballots. And there's a reason there's only very few people that put their names on ballots. But maybe we should suspend it until we've had a chance to visit with Chris about some things and until we really make a decision what we wanna do. I don't wanna just leave it there. If we don't even know when it's coming down, if we're not saying, "Well, we're gonna run it for 10 days or two weeks," or "Is it a month? Is it four months?" We can put it back up again in a week if that's, or two weeks if that's what we decide. That's open to us. But maybe in all fairness to try to figure a little bit of this out and still continue to have conversation. And I think it's brought forward conversation. Maybe we could decide and talk about it again in two weeks. I don't know what people think.
Well, yeah, I can tell you, I appreciate this conversation much more so than a social media conversation. I just don't think that those are, are the types of conversations that-
No.
That we have a fair exchange or an understanding and respectful discussion. I think that's-
I don't engage in social media conversations because I can never look a person in the eye and understand what it is they're trying to convey.
If you're going to use social media as your vehicle, how are you telling the community to go? Because I really don't go to Facebook. So, how would I weigh in on that survey as a member of the community? Was there an email that went out to every resident or anything?
Well, and, you know-
I'm just saying, moving forward.
Well, and those are, you know, those are questions that we're trying, we're trying to answer. Right now, we're using social media as a tool to, to reach people and it's not the only tool that we use.
No.
So, but, you know, bringing it back to this conversation, in the meantime, I mean, Patrick, you said we've had almost 500 responses for, like, people who have taken the survey.
But are they really taking the survey or are they, we don't know what the responses are, right? So-
Well, and I would, I would, I would ask if that, if that really makes much of a difference. Because if people, if people are taking it in a, in a, you know, a protest, I mean, like, an attitude of protest, they're, they're giving us feedback, you know?
Yeah, but is it true feedback? Are, they could also be doing reverse thing and saying that they love something with four trailers and six garbage cans on it and they absolutely hate a picture of the harbor. You know what I mean?
Well, I mean-
That's not-
That's information, though.
But it's not helping us, Jay.
That's, that's information that's, that's telling that it's not a big deal for, you know, they don't care where people park their cars or trailers or anything like that. You know what I mean? Like, it's actually, that is actually, I, I feel like this is a, it's a pretty crappy way of getting that information. I mean, as far as like, like, you know, the feel-good sentiment of it, but it's, but it's, it's telling us that that person who filled out that, that survey, that is not an issue for them. Like, that is not their issue.
But what I'm saying is, it could be they're not being honest in it. It's kind of like having a, declaring a hostile witness in court. That's what I'm saying. But if they're, if they're not giving their, if they're not giving their true opinion and just trying to skew everything, I don't think that's helping us trying to move forward. Because then, truthfully, I say, "Let's shut down the survey, let's shut down and let's sit here and make our decisions and then I'll take the hailstorm afterwards for my decision."
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion that we suspend the survey, you know, pending further conversations with Chris and, you know, bring it back at our next council meeting for conversation about what to do next.
Is that, that's a formal motion? Okay, so that's a motion, is there a second to that motion?
Right, second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion?
What questions do you want Chris to address?
Well, I mean, I think he's, he's heard some of the comments that were raised here. I mean, questions, first, the threat of potential, you know, legal issues. If there are any legal issues, we'd certainly wanna know what those might be. If there are options to this type of a survey that he's aware of from other communities that have engaged in this process, that would be, I think, also be helpful.
Chris, did you catch that last question?
I did, yep.
Is that something that you are comfortable addressing?
Uh, it's something that I will take a look at and then go from there.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion on this?
I have one thing to say. Perhaps on the survey, do the people in, in the community understand that this is all we're trying to accomplish, an updated city code? Do they know that? I mean, do they really understand that? I mean, I, I'm just saying, I mean, maybe-
I can't imagine-
People are reacting to pictures, but they, I, I hope they realize why they're there. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, you know, there's a lot of opinions here, but I'm just trying to, you know, maybe if they understood, "Look, we have codes that I know some neighbors would like enforced, but they're not getting enforced and we're not doing it. And so, we're trying to figure out from the public how we should do this kind of thing." I mean, do they understand that and result? Or are they just looking at these pictures going, "Hey, I know that guy's house, man, he's gonna be mad. They shouldn't be putting this on social media," you know? I mean, there's more to it than just the reaction. I mean, there's a reason why this is happening. I mean, I'm not saying it's right. I think Tim's suggestion is proper right now. I feel the same way. But I think the public needs to understand, "Hey, look, we're trying to write city, we're trying to write codes here."
Right.
That's gonna be-
And we're trying to see-
That's gonna be better for everybody that lives in this town.
And that's, and that's what we're, like, that's really, I mean-
Do they understand that? That's my-
Here's the introduction.
Can I say, can I say just one thing before we get there? Because I, I think this is, this is helpful for-
I didn't read that, so I don't know.
But, like, let's say that, let's say that this gets suspended, I don't know how you guys are gonna vote, I can anticipate, but I, I don't know how you guys are gonna vote. Let's say this gets suspended. So then, what's the next thing? What's the next step? The next step is, we still have a job to do. We still have information to gather from the community. We still have this code to build. We still have to do all these revisions. We still have to ask hard questions. Like, all this stuff is still gonna happen. So, so this is something that the commu-, like, we, like, the council, the city staff, like, everybody needs to be involved in this. Because if they're not involved in this, then their voice will not be heard in the calculation. And that, that I think is, if we can take one thing away from this whole, this whole situation, that should be the thing, is that you need to be a part of this. Because otherwise, like, you know, the city code, like, we, we, the five of us, can't sit in a, in a smoky room and decide what everybody's supposed to do in town. I don't want to do that. I don't think any of you wanna do that. Like, that, that sounds horrible. So then, we need to ask everybody in town to give us their feedback and be like, "This is cool. This is not cool. This is cool. This is not cool."
But I challenge you to find a better, and you'll already read that, but I challenge, like, how, what is a better way to be able to do that impact, like, so while you're gonna have a public hearing on, like, what our ordinances should be? Because then how do you point out, like, "Well, I mean, that trash yard up over on," it's like, well, you're doing the same thing, you're calling it out. If you didn't just comment on Facebook about how much you think this is stupid, why don't you just, if you don't have any problem with it, or you, why don't you just, like, say that you're neutral or that you're positive to this image that might be perceived as being negative? Because that's the information that we're gonna go with. If a thousand people say, like, "I don't have any problem with whatever, Mike's yard," then we, that's, I said that way at the beginning of this. Then, like, that's the direction that we're gonna take from it. That, well, people don't really have an issue, apparently, with, I mean, this. So, but they have, you know, with X, but they have an issue with Y. And that's where, Y is where we're gonna focus on trying to clarify language in the code.
Well, I mean, maybe it becomes more of a narrative than a, than a photo, you know, type thing.
Right, well, let's, let's let the, let's let the-
The narrative doesn't-
Let's let the motion play itself out.
Talks about an issue or a problem.
So, it's not gonna be as effective without pictures. And you can see how effective the pictures are because most people are visual learners and most people are capable of digging in at a deeper level of an image than their words.
Kelly, Kelly, do you wanna read that?
I can. And I think-
Well, she was waiting to read it and, okay.
I think a lot of people missed this whole point and didn't look at it, obviously.[1792.32]
I've got it up here.
Oh, okay. The City of Grand Marais recognizes that the behavior of its members and condition of its properties either contribute or detract from community health. The city is committed to supporting the public and maintaining a culture that promotes respect, fellowship, and personal investment in the community. This survey is intended to help city boards and staff identify the community's priorities and preferences in the context of community health. The city has collected a number of photos of properties or behaviors on a spectrum of contributing to or detracting from community health. We would like your help in identifying where on the spectrum these images should be placed and how to describe the subject of the picture. And maybe that was broad and some, some people didn't understand, but I would say a lot of people didn't understand that in...
The context of city.
The context of it. And again, I'm willing to have hard discussions. I just, I just think right now, and for me, it's a piece of legality, until Chris can tell us that we're okay doing this. I mean, personally, if somebody takes a picture of my place, it, it doesn't bother me, whether it's a junkyard, which part of it, kind of, I feel is, or whether it's a, my husband would disagree with me. But, um, yeah, I just, I think that that's where we're at. And...
Okay. Okay, last one. What you got?
I just, I think that there's a different way to go about it than setting up pictures and asking people in the area of internet, Boeing, and Click, Happening, and Tinder, where you're just asked to swipe left or right on what you see in front of you in the image. And then you're only allowed to pick out one word. Why you did that for your image doesn't seem like a very inclusive way to gather the information you're looking for. Somebody could put up a picture of a synagogue, and somebody could say, I don't like this, this detracts from my community. And is it because of the weeds in front? Is it because of this? It leads into some dangerous areas, what we're asking the community for feedback for. I think that you guys have set goals and priorities. I don't think that there was a primer for the community to really understand how this survey is impacting that. I think people seeing their property, I think that that's a powerful thing. I think they're acknowledging that. But asking their neighbors to then pass judgment on it is a pretty severe, it's a, it's a vulnerable thing. And the way the survey was set up, I can see how you got there, but it was very much a way of saying, this isn't good, there's a bias here, these are bad, these are people who have things, these are people who don't have things. How do we tackle it as a community? It just, there, you know, there was pictures of water skipping in the harbor, and that has nothing to do with anybody's property. There's probably an ordinance in the code for it. Some people don't wear deodorant. That bothers me. Do I get to tell the city council about it?
Okay.
But, like, do you know what I'm saying? It feels a little bit like gentrification, to put it out this way. You know? That's, I just think that you could ask for people to give you a little bit more, if you're going to put me in a loop, you can ask for people to give you a little bit more background, be a little bit softer, and let people really explain the narrative of what they're asking for. Instead of forcing them into just saying, I don't like this, but I can't tell you why. It's just bad. And then you subjectively get to take that information and do really powerful things with it.
Any, any closing, closing comments, thoughts?
More on the motion.
That's it, right?
Time to move on.
All right, so all in fashion, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Okay. So, Chris will be in contact with you. We will...
Okay.
Work on this. Okay, so we're going to move right along. Yes, to the original, to the original agenda.
Original E.
Original E. So, you're up. You are E. So, a little bit of, of background information. We were going to see this, well, actually, no, it was supposed to come to this meeting, to this meeting. The library board has been working to adjust its, its budget for 2020. With estimated increases in, in benefit packages and such like that, the, the numbers are pretty modest. I'll let Steve go into details about, about the numbers. There is an automatic, the county and the city have an agreement on this one, where there is, the county has to automatically approve if it's underneath a certain percentage. And, but really, the decision to move forward, that belongs to us. So, go ahead.
I guess the big achievement with this budget is that our operating budget is fully funded, which it has not been for the last couple of years. We've been drawing from the library designated fund to tide us through. And we did that in a couple of ways. One change is that we did add a few hours to one of our staff people, because there's some things changing with our library automation package that we use, and it's going to have an impact on our catalogers. So we increased her from 15 to 18 hours per week. Our book budget is fully funded again. We increased the heating fuel thing, because we've been all over the map in that in the last couple of years, and we've been trying to anticipate where it goes. And it looks like it's going to be a little higher this, this year and in the coming year.
It's, it's an interesting line to look at, though. If you look across, you know, we go from, like, we'll have a, like, almost a $1,200 bill one year, and then we'll have almost a $4,000 year bill the next year. And, you know, it's, it's very difficult to predict whether we're going to have a hard or a soft winter.
That's actually our, probably our hardest line to anticipate year to year. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them.
Truly, my only question, Steve, was in the overtime column.
Mm-hmm.
Extra hours claimed as comp time? What does that mean? And there's zero dollars. Do, do we not have staff that gets overtime?
We just don't pay it out as overtime.
We, if people want it paid as overtime, we pay it as overtime.
Yeah, we have to allow that.
But we don't have that. I'm salaried.
He's salaried. We've got one other full-time person.
And she's very good about, she's 40 hours a week.
And if they work on a holiday, that gets coded into that overtime, just because it's a, a time and a half.
Okay.
And, and that can happen, because we, the library is open on Columbus State, even though the rest of the city is closed.
Yeah. I don't have an issue with where it said here. It made it sound like claimed as comp time, like, our people don't get overtime, they have to take it as that. And I have an HR question that way, but it's answered.
So other, other numbers of consequence here is the, in the overall budget, we're looking at a 4.71% increase, which is under the 5%. That is the, the agreed, agreed upon maximum based on, on the joint power agreement between the city and the county. So...
We don't have any idea about health insurance rates for next year, right?
Right.
How has that gone this year so far? Fairly well?
Um, it was a little bumpy at first. It's working itself out.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions about the, about the library budget? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the library budget as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just think that, you know, library board and staff do a good job trying to, you know, keep this budget in line over the years. You know, we see, we see, we've seen an increase in services and, you know, budgets that have reflected less than 5% increases. And I appreciate the, the work that you do to provide the service, continued, you know, expansion of the library and serve, serve the, the community, so.
The flexibility that the library has been able to show as well in adjusting to the changes in library practices, such as different circulation practices, different media practices, and, and just how to get people to continue to come into the library and use it as a resource, I think is also something that's very impressive. And, you know, with the budget that we're given, I think, I think they do an incredible job with that. So, that's all I have. Any other, any other comments?
What I could say to that is, the library industry, beginning in about 2011, there was a huge transformation in how libraries operate. Much more of a community hub, a lot more presentation kind of activities, things for people to do in the library, library becoming more of a community space. And that's a trend that's happening in public libraries all over the, the country. As is the thing with going fines free, which we did some estimating, we think that's only going to affect us about $3,000 in terms of revenue. Well, how much goodwill does that buy us in the community? How many barriers does that remove for people who, who struggle? We had families who were afraid to let their kids check out more than two books at a time, because they couldn't afford a fine if they, if they had 20 books out. That's not the kind of community we want to foster. We want people to use it freely. And, and for that little bit of impact there, it's just not worth it. And lot, public libraries all over the country are finding that. That's a huge wave that's coming through public libraries everywhere right now, is, is going fines free, and for specifically that reason.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. You can maybe educate me a little bit on how the public library works, because I'm, I'm new to this. But I just, is it typical for all or most public libraries to be, when you start running your numbers here, I'm looking at labor versus your whole budget, you're about at 80% labor.
That's typical.
Is that typical?
Yep, that's typical.
Okay. I'm just...
So much of what a library...
I'm just, you know, I know it's a service to the community, I get it. And I know there really isn't much a library can do to bring income in other than fines, or you have your book sales and you sell, I mean, those kinds of things. But I'm just, you know, that's just a thing that popped out to me when I started counting numbers and adding things up, and I'm going, wow.
That's very typical.
Labor's 0.5 and your budget's 3.84. It's like, wow.
That's very typical.
I can't run my, I can't run my business like that.
Craig, that's very typical for a library's budget to be almost entirely salaries. And in fact, in our region, there are some libraries where that's almost their entire budget, I mean, beyond 80%. That you wouldn't believe how many libraries there are in our region who have zero dollars for buying books. There's quite a few. And that's one of the ways that our community's been really strong in terms of supporting the library, is to ensure that we have money to buy books. And, and it makes a big difference in the quality of your library when you can do that.
How's the, how's the, it's been over the past few years, but like, the outreach and the, like, satellite idea of, like, being able to let people throughout the county have better access?
We've been working hard. For people who live at a distance from town, there are several tools that they can use to get library services. They, they're eligible for mail a book. People who live in care facilities in town even are eligible for mail a book. There's the downloadable eBooks, the downloadable audiobooks. I've been working hard to encourage more use of some of the databases and stuff. And maybe you've seen some of the cards that we've been handing out around town, where you can get free access to the entire Chilton's library. If you work on your own vehicles at home, take your iPad to the garage with you, and you can get access to the Chilton's manual right there for free through the library site. There's a, there's a lot of stuff like that. It's, if you bring, if you try to promote it all at once, it's too much, it overwhelms people. So we try to pick things that we think might engage people in the community and focus on them one at a time. Right now, it's Chilton's. So if you know anybody who works on their vehicle...
Hot damn.
I've got a card for them. Just about everybody. I'll leave some, I'll leave some of your store.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thank you, guys. Thanks for the hard work.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. All right, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for hanging out with us for so long.
All right, so the next thing that we have on the, on the agenda is the pedestrian plan. This was a joint, you going to come up, or you're just going to sit back?
No, I'm just here to watch.
Okay, cool. That's cool. You can do that. The, so in 2018, this was a partnership between the statewide health improvement partnership, which is funded from the state through Sawtooth Mountain Clinic and ARDC. And, and we, we worked with them to put together a, a pedestrian plan. So the pedestrian plan is nothing more than, than to show, to show how we get people to the places that they want to go in Grand Marais and remove the barriers that, that may be there for people who cannot drive, or do not drive, or who, you know, have some kind of, some kind of a handicap situation. You know, we want to make sure that people can get around the, the community. There's a bunch of bullet points on the memo that, that talk about the purpose of it, address safety and accessibility, discuss infrastructure needs, outline existing practices, clarify roles and responsibilities, receive input for priority of infrastructure, promote citizen health, explore opportunities for the future.
Let's just focus in on one of those in particular right now, because it really it's back to your priorities. We have a pedestrian system, and we have a need to have good capital improvement planning. And in order for us to do capital improvement planning on a pedestrian system, it's important to recognize where we want what types of facilities. And so that was one of the really major goals we wanted to get out of this. Another goal that we wanted to get out of this was understanding what types of maintenance activities the community expects and that we're going to be performing. And so we'll look at both of those things. In the pedestrian plan, you've got the whole version of it that was included in your emailed out packet. The printed outs in the packet don't show the full pages, so we're just going to go through a couple of the slides. And keep in mind that there's a lot of extra data underlying this that are in the appendices that are not part of the short, shorter plans. Here's just a couple of pictures. First of all, here is the map that says, well, where do we expect people to be able to walk and call it a walk from the corridor? And then, that's the yellow shaded areas. The next is, where do we think it's important to have what we're calling walking infrastructure? So something where they're not necessarily just walking down the middle of the street. Let's just start with any questions about this, and then we'll talk into what those things mean and why one might be more appropriate than another at certain locations.
So the, the yellow is where we identified that we want to have people be able to go.
Yes. This, and that, we'll talk about how those got identified when we look at some of the data collection.
Does that make sense to everybody? And so the...
Let's move on, then. So, context-sensitive design, this is in the packet. And a part of this idea is that some of these streets, you don't have to have a separate infrastructure for pedestrians in order for it to be pedestrian-friendly. Most of the neighborhood streets in our town, it's perfectly safe for pedestrians and cars, at least in the summertime, to coexist, because there's just not enough of either pedestrians or cars. And this is a concept that's trying to, to show that. I mean, we're a rural town. Most of our roads are local or collector roads, if you were to try and categorize them. And the idea is that really, there's a medium amount of bike or car traffic and a heavier amount of pedestrian traffic is what you ought to expect in those sorts of, those situations. So, what, this was now towards the end of last year when we did this exercise, but maybe you remember some of these maps being up. And the question is, where do you want to get in the City of Grand Marais? We didn't ask, where do you want to walk, or where do you want to bike, or drive? We want to just know where you want to get. Because one of our assumptions is that some people are going to choose to walk, and some are going to choose to bike, and some are going to choose to drive, and that we ought to be able to accommodate the major destinations that people identify for all of those uses. This is, if you remember how this worked, people got pins that they got to put on this map. And this is a depiction of all the pins that were collected on all the maps where we did this exercise. 617. And you can see they're color-coded by the time and place that, that we did it. So all that data, if people want to know, is, is available. Then that's developed into what is called a heat map. And this was all worked through ARDC. They helped us do this. And you can kind of see that areas where most of the pins collected, it's not a surprise. I think we probably could have had three people sit in a room and figure this out. But this is a nice way to just check in with the community. It was really easy. It didn't cost a lot of money to do this exercise. And we find out, you know, drill into that downtown area where the heat map is high, and you can see...
Brewery and the donut shop.
The brewery and the donut shop, yeah. And, and Javamoose and the DQ. I mean, there's just some places that a lot of people said, I want to be able to get here. So, the other pieces that we wanted to look at, not just where do people want to get to, but also, are there crossings that we know in particular are of concern in intersections, and then also mid-block areas? So some of these are probably pretty obvious. Some of them, you know, a lot of it has to do with safe routes to school, for instance, where we're looking at kids being in intersections or mid-block crossings. And we just want to make sure that we think about that when we're putting our pedestrian system together. system together. Now, we've got that first map we looked at. Where are the walk-friendly corridors that we'd like to see and where is the desired walking infrastructure that we'd like to see? That combined with where do we have our existing infrastructure creates a map like this that says what needs to be fixed so that it's walk-friendly again? What needs to be built because it's not there? And what needs to be abandoned because we said it's not part of the system that we need and we're not willing to maintain it? So that's the balance we wanted to strike is if we're gonna have a system, it needs to be maintained adequately. And we know there are places in our system right now that aren't. And a lot of that is because they don't connect very well and a lot of it is because they're really not on a route where they're needed. So this map is trying to answer that question. And most of that orange area, you can see existing no action other than the Highway 61, which is all gonna happen in the next two years where the action's already planned. But you can also see some of the more recent developments. County Road 7, First Avenue West. Some of the sidewalks on Second Street are in decent enough shape. And this is based on ARDC did a condition assessment of those sidewalks. You can see there's quite a bit of green construct. And this is where the group said there aren't sidewalks here right now, but these are definitely routes that connect the places people said they want to go and we expect that people are walking on them. So the biggest difference is maybe Fifth Street and then Third Avenue West, or Fifth Avenue West and Third Avenue West. That we included the county in this entire process because we anticipated that, and we've seen this before, most of those major connections that we have in the city, we don't own. The county or the state owns them. So Fifth Avenue West, County Road 7, the Gunflint Trail, Wisconsin and Broadway are all county streets.
Can I ask a silly question, but I gotta understand.
Yeah.
At the corner of Fifth Avenue West and the Gunflint Trail.
Yes.
It extends just up to like the lower side of the corner there is the, oh, the water tower.
Yeah.
Why?
Sawtooth Bluffs.
Sawtooth Bluffs.
Okay.
This is an anticipation of that construction.
Okay. I'm just like...
A pedestrian route to get there.
You can see, I mean, there's a few random dots in the harbor and in East Bay, but there's actually quite a few in the Sawtooth Bluffs area. And there's also a collection that was up in what we imagine is the pincushion area. And so that's what that's anticipating is that there definitely needs to be a pedestrian connection. If there's a park there, that'll be a destination people will want to walk, bike, get to other than cars. Third Avenue West is, well, other than Java and Voyager, which people said are destinations they want to get to, it also connects to the community center and the school area. So this is a route and it's that Wisconsin 61 downtown intersection where we know there's a lot of activity going on here. So that was a route that we didn't imagine was something that we were planning on doing off-street infrastructure. And this plan is saying maybe we need to think about doing that. And then the Gunflint Trail is another connection that's really quite critical, particularly between Highway 61 and County Road 7 where we know that's a route, a school route where people are walking right now and that there's in the works for that, but also the rest of the Gunflint Trail as well. So what this says is where we think we need to build things. What it doesn't say is what do we think we need to build? When do we think we're gonna build it? So this plan is just trying to give us kind of the base of what's the system we want to strive for. And the next step then would be to take this information, start looking at existing construction plans where we're planning on redoing streets or utilities and making sure that when that happens, that we're thinking about doing the changes that are called out in this plan as well. And then there also might be a few of these connections where we see an opportunity to add them without having the whole street reconstructed. Does that make sense? And then the spots that say we're gonna abandon, I guess we'll have to talk a little bit more detail about that. But I really wanted that concept to be included here because we have struggled with keeping all these sidewalks maintained. And I didn't want this to only be a conversation about building more sidewalks. I think it needs to be a realistic conversation about the size of system we're interested in having. And I think, again, this is just our first creation of this. This is something that needs to be revisited on a regular basis to make sure we still think that's a route when time comes to do a construction project. And there might be others that we decide are not necessary. We're not gonna maintain them.
So really eminent ones here, we're talking about Fifth Avenue West and perhaps First Street when we start talking about the reconstruction of First Street.
Right.
And the rest of these things are ones that we'll have to weigh the, you know, the construction cost, the importance to the plan, that sort of thing, to identify those projects as they come up.
So one of the key juxtapositions here to think about is back to the, where are the walk-friendly corridors? And Second Street, all the way to the end, well, at least all the way to, say, the new houses that are being built, but probably all the way to the end is something that we would consider we want it to be a walk-friendly corridor. And right now, Second Street west of Bay Avenue is 30 feet wide. It's a very narrow street. On-street parking is allowed on both sides. And yet, there, if most of those homes have on-street parking, so there's not a lot of on-street parking that occurs. The traffic is not at a high level. And so in our opinion right now, without adding sidewalks, that already meets the requirement of being safe and friendly for pedestrians.
Can I ask, if you stop on that one? Why, I mean, just more of a question. I feel like part of what's always interesting when you're walking on a sidewalk is how they just like stop in the next, like either in the middle of a block or whatever.
Yeah.
So I guess I just wonder on like Second Avenue West, how that from Third Street down, they're talking about construction, but why, 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 where, where did that reasoning come from to stop it at Third Street?
It had something to do with what's on that street.
Well, the library's at the bottom of it. And so the main destination there is getting to the library. And why stop it at Third Street rather than going up?
To the school or whatever.
I don't think that's the route that people would generally take to get to the library from the school. The entrance is on First Avenue West. The entrance to the community center is on Third Avenue West.
That's all I just was wondering.
I know, would even question if that needs to go up to Third Street and Third Street needs to be connecting east-west. If it was just me drawing it, I probably wouldn't have done that. But we had a team that was working on this together and we tried to get all of those pieces, you know, all the input. And they, the group felt pretty strongly that Third Street was something that needed to be a connector as well, east-west. And that Second Avenue West particularly to get down to that library, those little two blocks, there needed to be infrastructure.
There's a lot of traffic there because Third Street also houses all the laundromat and higher ed.
Yep.
I think that was part of why that...
Higher ed might have been one of the key.
Yeah.
One of the connections.
And all the streets, you know, really do tie in to whether you're gonna go north and south. Generally, people are walking because it's less steep, walking across, across the hill and then either go up or down when they get to the street that they need to go up or down on it. Just seemed, seemed that was a better pattern for people's movements.
So the last piece of this is when we talk about maintenance, obviously fixing sidewalks so that they're in good condition and walkable is important. But most people's first thought when they talk about sidewalk maintenance is actually about snow clearing. And we've got a long season where this is an issue and it's most of the school year. And so that we wanted to talk about where we do snow clearing and where we're not gonna do snow clearing on this system too. And so that in the plan itself, there's a little paragraph that talks about the ordinance that we have in place right now, which says adjacent property owners are responsible for clearing sidewalks. And we still need to resolve whether that's something that is going to be expected or is that something that we're gonna walk away from. But in the meantime, we did want to separate this out into high priority and low priority. And the high priority routes that we have identified here, the ones that are existing already are ones that either the city or the county are already clearing snow on. And then the ones like Fifth Avenue West doesn't exist right now. When that's built, it's an important enough connector that we think it needs to be treated like First Avenue where either the city or the county is going to be removing snow on it. So we've got this kind of collector area where we think that the government entities should be the ones that are clearing snow. We've got the rest of those yellow routes where we think that it should be the adjacent property owners if anybody's gonna clear snow. Now, it's up to, you know, it's up to you to decide how that's gonna play out. And obviously, we haven't enforced that, I don't know if ever. And one of the reasons I think we haven't enforced this is because we haven't really had an idea of importance attached to any of those routes. And now we're trying to get to that place where we say, well, this route's really important. So we either have to make the government do it on behalf of the community because it's important for the entire community, not just the people that live there, or we're gonna ask the neighbors to take care of it.
And this is a really interesting conversation too, when you look at, you know, if, like the ordinance right now says that sidewalks need to be cleared. On my street, it's really incredibly clear to me that the person who owned my house or one of the previous people who owned my house pulled the sidewalk up, like they took the concrete slabs out of the front yard because they're not there. But they do exist buried in grass by my, on my neighbor on one side and almost buried in grass for my neighbor on the other side. So if that actually constitutes a sidewalk, then my, you know, my neighbors should be clearing the snow from those. You know, and it's really interesting to me. This is a really good formal way of identifying where the sidewalks that the city has are going to be so that then we can kind of put to bed all these other understandings of, you know, like these sidewalks, like what you were saying, that just kind of end up nowhere. You know, they just kind of go and then stop and then go and then stop. And so then we can have these routes be understood routes. We can have patterns grow around them and then we can continue to maintain them. So I think that that, I think that that's really a beautiful thing about, about the plan, about like formalizing this. So then we actually know kind of what our goals are and this is a way to get there. Does that make sense?
Yeah. One of the things that I don't see on here, I don't recall conversations back, maybe Andrea, you might remember some of this, but that there's no east-west priority route between Fifth Street and Highway 61. I'm thinking, you know, Second Street or something so that people can move from, say, the courthouse to downtown, you know, without having to just go straight up and down from Mike's house.
I mean, I, obviously, I take that route four times a day.
Yeah.
And I'm not the perfect example of this, but I feel perfectly comfortable walking in the street on the east-west routes, even in the wintertime because it's not steeply sloped. You know, I would feel a lot less comfortable doing that on some of the avenues where cars don't have the ability to maneuver in a predictable way. But on those streets, it's not an issue for me. Now, there obviously is people, there will be people that aren't gonna feel that way and they're not gonna be comfortable walking down the middle of the street in the wintertime.
Well, I'm just wondering with the connection between Fifth Avenue West and First Avenue West where you have two high priority avenues, that you'd have a way mid, midway between Fifth, Fifth Street and downtown?
I can also tell you that particularly on Second Street, there are some exceptionally huge piles of snow on the north side of that road in the wintertime.
Very true.
And, you know, south of the courthouse lawn, for instance, where that's just, that little wall there is the perfect snow fence that drops a massive drift onto that spot. It would be a real challenge to keep that sidewalk there.
And that one was one that was listed for abandonment too, right?
Not below the courthouse. No, just west of Fifth Avenue.
Oh. Well, maybe I was looking at that wrong. I thought it was the...
So the south side of Second Street between Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue.
Mike's side.
There's not actually a complete sidewalk there either. There's a little bit of sidewalk that goes in front of the Congregational Church, but it stops at their parking lot and doesn't start or doesn't get all the way to the next block. And then there isn't one.
It used to. Is it buried underneath grass?
Well, there isn't, you know, Fourth Avenue is not a...
Maybe is that orange?
Not a paved street.
It just goes through there.
The little U-shaped one.
Is existing sidewalk that goes around the south end of the courthouse.
I thought it was red. That's the only reason I asked that.
Got it.
So it's orange.
Okay, yep. So...
Looked like burnt up or maybe.
It's kind of less timely than we had hoped, but obviously, there's been a lot of other things on the agenda that have taken a lot of time, even this one. And, but this was developed with a lot of involvement from the important players and a lot of community engagement to come up with a system that we think the community is looking for us to provide. So I'm hoping that you're willing to adopt this as the official pedestrian plan of Grand Marais.
So this means that those then in red will be maintained snow removal? Is that what that slide is showing?
That's what it's showing.
Okay.
So that's not changing anything until new facilities are constructed. So some on 61, some on the Gunflint Trail and some on Fifth Avenue West don't exist right now. We're not doing them. We're saying that when they're built, we think they should be done by the city or the county.
And there was, yeah, Kristen and Jeff were both part of this as members. Okay. Got it.
And we had Heidi too, I think?
So this, so this plan, you know, like what Mike said, has been, has been pretty thoroughly vetted by a lot of organizations around town. Well, basically, all the organizations around town that work with people who, who walk or move around town, you know, like that's their issue, healthcare and et cetera, et cetera. Where we're, what we're looking for now is, is this ready for us to say, yes, this is what we want to do? This is where we want to be going? We want to set this as the, as the course for, for our pedestrian infrastructure, namely sidewalks, so that when we start working on new plans for, for updating roads and other infrastructure, that we can, that we can include these things in those plans? That's, that's the question. And if we, if we vote or vote to adopt this, then that's what will, that's what will happen. There's more work that needs to be done than we do that, but at this point, I don't know what additional work there would be personally.
Well, I'd make them, well, I guess I'll ask my question first before the discussion. So this is the, like Mike said, the initial concept of like, here's what we want to go for. So if we say we're gonna reconstruct this street, whatever, then we have that ability to look like, well, that is actually part of our walking plan or our pedestrian plan as far as street width, all of those kinds of things. That'll just come down to a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. I'd make the motion to approve the Grand Marais pedestrian plan.
Motion, is there a second?
I will...
Go ahead.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
As long as you don't narrow up the streets to make room for sidewalks, that's mine. I think that's important. I think we've kind of got away from safety by narrowing up some of the streets up at the school, I don't think.
Yeah, and the plan doesn't call for anything like that. This...
Well, you're gonna put sidewalks in. So you got, that's gotta be somewhere.
Everywhere there's sidewalks, we call for. We have a 66-foot right away. So there's plenty of streets in town, even on avenues up and down the hills where there's a 40-foot pavement and sidewalks on both sides. It's certainly achievable. So there's no predetermination about what the construction technique's gonna be with this plan. And like Anton asked, it just be done on a case-by-case basis when we have a construction project. You'll get to talk about all of those details.
Great. Cool. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Okay. So the next one on the agenda goes into that recodification conversation. So we've got, we got a bid back from the League of Minnesota Cities, American Legal Publishing Corporation, like they're, they're kind of, from what I understand, they're partners in doing this type of work. They have a pretty extensive legal staff that this is what they do. Like this is their job. And on page, let's see if I can find the right page here. Page, page 38 of the packet, which I guess is page 104 in their thing. I guess I've got it numbered here. You probably don't have it numbered.
Two.
It's the one that says codification services agreement. This is the, is what they're saying they're gonna do. And if I was gonna put this in a nutshell, and I'm gonna look at, look at Mike to double check what I'm saying here, the nutshell would include, they're gonna make this a modern, like word processing document, like not word processing, but a modern document that then is properly searchable, has the titles and the topics and the subjects and everything in the right place, has been double-checked against current, current law case requirements and precedents that are important or that have changed since it was last, last redone and have a bunch of electronic versions that we're gonna get.
Read off the list that you probably want to understand too is simplify language where too, is simplify language where appropriate to provide uniformity of style, and to convert to gender-neutral language wherever possible. So what's this doing, taking the existing code that we have, doing a legal review of it? I'm not anticipating they're gonna find a lot of things, but they'll find some. And taking that existing code and reformatting it so that we can use it in a more, easier-to-communicate way with people. What they're not gonna do is change the rules based on what we want the code to say. So they're not gonna go through a process with you where they say, you sure you want this code that says this is a fire zone downtown and the fire chief has to, you know, that, piece by piece and all that stuff? So there's still gonna be a lot of things in the code that are out of date, not because they're illegal, but just because they're not relevant to us anymore. And that's not something we can hire somebody outside to figure out for us. Well, I suppose it is something we could, but it'd be a lengthy, expensive process. So one of the things we will be able to do with it, though, and it's been mentioned a couple of times, is it'd be a lot easier to, for anybody to be able to come and search and figure out what the code says about a particular issue. And it's never as simple as you go to the index and it's on page 46. There's always 10 things that could potentially relate to it. So just having that more open for people is a good thing. So when we do get into the process, which we've dipped our toe into now, of talking about code updates, I'm imagining, you know, crowdsourcing this out, too, where we're asking people to say, like they've done on an ongoing basis for a very long time, hey, this little piece of code's not working for us. Could you think about changing it this way? And then you can think about changing it that way. And we can collect those sorts of requests over time, and every once in a while, go through a list and say, okay, these are the ones we're gonna do. And I think just being able to have this out in front of people in an easier way will make that a better process for us.
So if we accept this, there's different, different options. One is to do it without the zoning ordinance, the other is with the zoning ordinance. When do we have to make a decision about when we, when we would either include or would that be part of the motion?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. That's a, that's a decision that we should make, to make. When we make a decision on this, say?
I mean, you don't, I mean, you're, you're asking them to do that work now or not do that work now? It doesn't automatically become part of the code until you go through the steps to do that. So if they codify, they prepare a draft code that codifies a zoning ordinance, for some reason, we decided we don't want that, you don't have to accept that piece of it. I would recommend that we do ask them to do that.
I agree. Well, I would make a motion that we accept the proposal from...
League of Minnesota Cities American Legal Publishing.
Yes. For the sum of $9,450, which includes the codification of the zoning ordinance. And we also do it in the single-page format, the single-column-per-page format, because there's two different formats that they can do it in.
That's the cheaper of the two, I believe.
Um, yes. Well, it's $18,000, yeah. Yes, it is. To me, the single, single column, or the single column-per-page makes it easier to read. You know, I don't know if you've looked at it and thought, had any opinions on it, but to me, that looked...
Fairly agnostic about it. I mean, the, the code today is, is two columns, the zoning ordinance is one.
Yeah.
They both work.
I think for the public, when they're reading it, sometimes it's a little bit easier, but it just doesn't have the separation and, you know.
Okay, so that's a motion? All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Then, motion and a second, any further discussion on this? I, I think that we're gonna find a tremendous amount of value in this, as far as having it accessible, more easily accessible, through the process of going through the city code and, you know, and updating ordinances. This is an essential piece, in my, in my opinion, of how we're gonna be able to take out the low-hanging fruit and then really just work on what the issues are, instead of struggling with ancient language and questionable, questionably-written legalese. So I think that's really a valuable thing. Anything else?
I had a question about, because there's optional services and understanding, will we be able to have this online, or do we need to pay for this under Part 5 here in optional services?
That, that's a question of, which I'm glad you brought up, because I wanted to talk about before you voted, what's next? Okay, they do the work to update it, then how do we use it? And I don't think we've decided yet if we want someone else to host it or if we're gonna host it. I don't know why we couldn't host it, but...
We'll have to talk more with them about what that entails with our website, and if our website's able to do that.
Okay.
And so, but I'll look into that.
Okay.
And then, when we update things, do we have to re-include them in that process? Because whenever we pass an ordinance, of course, Chris is doing this legal and case review for us to make sure that what we're writing is acceptable. So there's really not necessarily a need to have somebody else do that. Plus, Chris just does that as a service to us whenever there's new case law that may affect some existing ordinances that we have, to bring that to our attention. So I suspect that the outcome is we're gonna be able to just self-publish all of our ordinances, and we'll look at whether it makes any sense to involve someone else in that process.
And there is, there is a pretty substantial list of online features that are included in there, and then the ones that are optional, which would be the listing and the things that we, that we just...
Yeah, I just didn't know if we had to, because it was part of this whole, if we needed to choose now, so.
That, that's something that can be done with the final product, once we actually know what we're at, what our application is to it. Anything else? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Okay, fabulous. All right, so the last thing we have is we have a library hire. Decision-making on that was done before the...
Yeah, it ended up carrying through to this week. It's just taken a little bit longer than they had hoped, which is why I didn't get a memo on it. There was two openings that they posted and interviewed for. One was for a library clerk, and one was for a library cleaner. They've made a determination to not hire a library clerk at this time. One of our existing clerks will be in a position to add hours to their schedule at the end of the year. So we're just gonna ride out the rest of the summer and make do with the staff that we've got. And then when that person is able to increase their hours, we're gonna add back the staff actively instead. Then the library cleaner, we would like to hire Jared Persons.
I'd make a motion to hire Jared Persons as the library cleaner.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I will second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carry. Also, would like to point out, just on the clerk situation, that the, the posting was put up because we had a library clerk move to a different position, or like, move to a different job. So, so it wasn't, we're not adding additional staff? It was, it was a replacement of someone?
It's kind of an ongoing conversation. How many clerks are, you know, the best fit for filling our schedule, giving them all the hours they need, and giving them all the flexibility that they want? And it may, we've gone back and forth before on that number, and they may come back and recommend something different in the future.
Okay, we're on to council and staff reports. Craig, what you got?
Um, I was unable to make the last park board meeting, but one item that was on the agenda was the radio waves music festival application.
So we can expect that to be coming to us?
You can expect that coming forward, yeah. You won't, you won't get it, I don't think.
Oh, really?
The park board just does that.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And that is set up September 3rd, and it's September 6th through the 8th.
Cool.
The dates on that.
Great. Anything else? Anton?
Uh, yeah, we had an EDA meeting yesterday. Couple things that came out of that. The, there's sold another business parking lot, which is fantastic. And it's actually a contractor, which is fantastic. General contractor who's hoping to move his family up, so more kids for the schools. And then we did, we have some business development, we have a business development, kind of like subcommittee and funds. And Hannah Senti was there, and she has the bakery now at Betsy Bowen Studio, and made a request for some money to upgrade some equipment, so she could increase capacity. And the, the subcommittee had recommended that unanimously to the full board, and we did the same. We, we approved that. And, trying to think what else. There was a, it was actually, yesterday evening, when I couldn't get the TV to work here, the, there was a, there was an organization called Catalyst, and it's pretty interesting. I didn't, apparently, there was a bunch of emails about it, but I just don't know why I missed it. But we talked, they were at our EDA meeting, and then I stuck around for the after. And it's an event that's put on, it was originally out of Los Angeles, and then it moved to Vermont for several years, and then they kind of outgrew Vermont. And Duluth just got an agreement with him for five years of hosting this event. And it was originally called, like, ITV, like, Independent TV. And, I mean, think of a film festival, but instead of, like, films, it's, you know, like Hulu and Netflix and those types of things, like streaming television. Yeah, and it's a place for those people that are in that world, whether it's in the production side or writing, or they're looking for locations. And Minnesota doesn't have a super fantastic rebate or incentive program going on right now. It used to be, I guess, like, $10 million, and now it's like $500,000. But IRR actually has, it's like 30%. I don't know if it's in the form of a refund or what, but incentive to try and get, get, you know, television shows and movies to film in the, in the, in the Tachnyt Relief District. And so in October, in the first part of October, this organization is hosting, and so it's like, people from all over the country and the world are coming to Duluth, and they'll be doing it for the next five years, and looking at using Northern Minnesota. And so this org, this, this group is here, though, to try and get, they were trying to reach out to local businesses to just register, register their, like, what they do, if they're, you know, they do, like, photography work, or if they do scouting, or if they're carpenters, or they're electricians, or they're, just to get their name in this book that's gonna be handed out to these, like, executives, these people are gonna show up in Duluth, so that when they see what the incentives are to be able to come here, instead of bringing people from somewhere else, they can see, like, you know, that there are actually businesses up here that are able to provide the services that they're looking for. Which was kind of, it was kind of interesting, hearing about what they have going on. So that was one thing. They had asked for $5,000, actually, out of, like, business, but we, we ended up going, going out of marketing with that for, like, $2,500, and it sounds like Visoka County was actually gonna do the other half that we didn't agree to. It sounded like, tentatively, so that's, it'll be interesting. I mean, St. Louis County, I think, was putting in $150,000 to that organization coming and participating there, so it seems. Anyway, I think there's probably... Oh. The last one, I guess, was that there's still two, there's been 10, 10 houses put up over on Second. They're still working on the most recent ones. I think those are twin homes, if I remember right. But anyway, the, the two that, or there's two left of the original 10. And the other ones have sold, they've got families and people living in them. They're having a little bit harder time selling, you know, I don't know if people remember, but the basis of how you could live in those was, there was certain number built where you could qualify to purchase them if you made 80% of median income, and then there was, if you, if you made 110% of median income. And so the 80% of median income, those are all gone right now. Those have sold, the ones that are done. And then the two that are left are that 110 of median income. And so Juan Roof had asked for $20,000 per, per house to have some fluctuation in the sale price of those, to try and make that a possibility for another family. We agreed to do that out of housing funds that we had budgeted for this year, with the understanding that, you know, if, if what it took was $14,000 or $16,000, that that, Juan Roof wouldn't capture the balance of that 20, that it would, the money that we put towards it would be what it would take to make the, the family able to afford the house and be able to get in there. So, from what I understand, there's a good program coming up on WTIP that talks about the process and how it all kind of started, with Abby Tofti, and, and then the families, several of the families that live up there. And I've forgotten, it's, it's gonna be pretty cool. I think it's on tomorrow on WTIP, but anyway, so that's, it's kind of good, you know? It's cool to see that that, it's working. It's what the EDA needed, so that's what I got.
All right. Tim?
Yeah, well, I mean, I've been out of town since the last meeting, so I haven't had, been, been to any other meetings. But a couple of things I just wanted to raise, I had received an email about a music complaint, and it was more of a broad, and I don't know if other council members received this same, you know? You know, and I, I haven't had a chance to respond to, to the issue, but, you know, I mean, I feel pretty strongly that, you know, music is part of the, kind of the downtown business community's, you know, needs in the short period of the summertime, and outdoor music is something that draws tourists and keeps them downtown, and they're spending money, and, you know, I mean, I, I know we've had this conversation, and I've, I think it's gone back to the, the time when we actually created the ordinance that allowed music to be played on Saturday, Friday and Saturday nights till midnight, and other nights only till 10 o'clock, because before that, there really wasn't anything on the books that controlled the music. Sure. I still think it's a good ordinance, and, you know, yeah, it does create additional sound. I wouldn't say it's a high, high, high sound, or, you know, it's not gonna exceed any decibel standards for, you know, for noise pollution, but it's certainly something that people can hear. You know, I mean, I could hear it in my front yard, you know, it sounds like the band's playing in my front yard some nights if the wind's blowing in the right direction, other nights if the winds blow in the other direction, I don't hear it at all, so it's... But at any rate, I just, you know, wanted to make it clear that, you know, I'd received, received a complaint, and, you know, I still think it's a valuable thing to be able to have music in the downtown area. I'm not sure what, what your response, you know, has been, but, you know.
I didn't respond either. We hear a lot of it, obviously, being two blocks away from it all, but, and as long as they're following the order, ordinance, I don't have an issue. And people should know what it is. If they don't, you know, they can certainly look or call City Hall to ask. Law enforcement should be aware, so if it's 12:30 and somebody's finding it offensive, then they need to call law enforcement. That's, that's truly where it lies, and that's where it has to go. I won't lie, I know Sunday evenings, sometimes I find it really difficult when I'm trying to get to sleep and the alarms go off at 5:00, but it's a small period of time, so...
Yeah, part of living in town.
It's, yeah.
In summer.
Yeah, and, and I don't mean to, you know...
No, I don't mean to belittle it.
Ignore somebody's request, but I just think that those, those are all part of the things, when you make a decision on where you live, you kind of have to deal with some of it, unfortunately.
Anything, Tim?
No, and just, just one other thing that Andrea had brought up, just that Highway 61 report, and the meeting that was held last week, and I'd heard some comments about that. I don't really know firsthand how that went, but I understood that the issue of the trees was, was brought up, and there were people that were concerned about that, and if, you know, Andrea was asking if there was gonna be some kind of city response to, to the concerns that were raised, and I, I don't know.
The way she characterized her request was based on some assumptions that I don't believe to be true, that those trees are our responsibility.
They're not our responsibility.
They're not our trees, they're MINDOT's trees, and we don't, not only do we not have any responsibility, we have no authority or ability to deal with them, other than the way we have, which is to work with MINDOT through the design process. So there are requirements in the contract for the care of the trees that we're gonna attempt to save, that, that we asked MINDOT to try and keep in the plans. But that's, you know, MINDOT will be taking responsibility for ensuring that those practices are done by the contractor. are done by the contractor. And I don't know what else we can do.
I mean, I'm satisfied with that. I just, you know, wanted to be, have it brought up that, you know, if that's, if that's an issue, I mean, if we have a responsibility, we should address it. And if it's not our responsibility, we should make it known that, that it's not our responsibility and, you know.
We have, we have done many things to make it crystal clear to MINDOT, the importance of saving the trees that are slated for state saving.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Kelly?
Nothing exciting, just wondering where we're, where we're at on August twenty-eighth, if we're gonna continue with that. And just forethought ahead, because it's only a month away, I will not be here for the September eleventh meeting. I am out of state.
August twenty-eighth?
Still, still on. Yep, we're working with the department heads now to get their schedules figured out.
Okay, awesome.
Hopefully we'll. The, the one thing I do know is that, that Dave will be out of town that week. So I was thinking we might do the park at the, actually before the meeting on the eleventh. But if you're not gonna be there, then we'll have to think of a different.
Well, there's four other people.
Yeah, but it's a big department. It'd be better if we could all be there for it. So we may look to an earlier time for him or, or later. We'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Do you guys have anything?
I do have a couple of things. Maybe you saw our new box owner was here in the audience and, and I told him I was gonna bring this up today, that they've made a request that we modify the insurance requirements in the right-of-way license. What our requirements are, are two million per occurrence, four million aggregate coverage with a million dollar umbrella policy. And they've expressed some difficulty in buying that coverage and offered instead to have a one million dollar per occurrence, two million dollar aggregate with a two million dollar umbrella policy. So then it becomes a little bit less than, you know, the total was five million per aggregate before and now it's only four. And I really had to struggle with, well, what does that mean for us and what does the risk look like? And of course, Chris has been involved in this and, and it's a council decision, you know, there isn't any other advice that Chris authored. You know, he, he suggested the initial coverage is at two and four and a million dollar umbrella policy. And it's certainly within your right to go with his, you know, recommendation or not. I guess I think we'll probably be okay, given the circumstances over there with the, with the lower coverage, that, that's kinda the conclusion I've come to. So if you want us to do a little more looking at that or prepare a report for you, I can do that. Otherwise, I would just recommend that we go ahead and accept their proposal at one and two million with a two million dollar umbrella coverage.
What would be incidents in which we would need to rely on their insurance for this?
Well, that, they have a, you know, polluting and dangerous facility in the right-of-way. So obviously there are a lot of things that could happen where it could potentially cost a lot of money. And, but they don't generally happen, right? And particularly with the, the type of regulations in place today for tanks, it's a lot different than it was when those tanks were originally installed and even when they were, you know, every tank in town's been rebuilt and they have a lot of different safety features in place now. It's all underground, everything that's in the right-of-way, so there's not a risk of physical interaction with things. I guess I've just had a hard time imagining what our risk might be. It's always a good idea to make sure that we're covered liability-wise, but in this case, I, I think we'll be okay with, you know, three and four million dollars total coverage rather than three and five million dollars.
So, what was I just gonna ask? There's a question about the insurance. Did they, they were, they were, they said that they're having difficulty finding that coverage or, or they don't wanna pay for that amount of coverage?
I suspect it's both. And you, if you want to ask them about it, we can invite them to the meeting and you can talk to them directly. That, what they communicated was that a small percentage of companies that offer this type of coverage will do anything other than a million, two million. So that's just their options are more limited and I think that means it ends up being significantly more expensive.
Does anybody have any feelings about this? Do we wanna come back with more information or do we?
I'd make a motion that we accept the reduced insurance.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I mean, I'll have to go off of the industry standard and off of people feeling comfortable about, about that. I don't anticipate any problems happening, honestly, so.
No, we never do, but.
Sure. That's what insurance is for.
That's what insurance is for, exactly. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Carries.
Since Tim wasn't at it, I'll just mention the PUC met last week and they talked about their strategy for taking action to meet the climate action plan. And so there's a lot of ways, of course, that they get involved in that because we have an electric utility. And that's nice that they're starting that planning and as they produce some ideas, we'll, we'll send that out to people. And then the Planning Commission met and they talked about, while they talked about the, all the public engagement tools that we're currently using, including the online survey and the, and the board with, in the lobby, reviewed that and authorized that, its use. And then we talked about the Housing Summit. So we've had HKGI working on housing issues with us and the end result of this was always going to be a summit where a group of people sits down, reviews the data that they've collected, goes through some sort of process where we end up deciding what are the policy or program changes that we wanna prioritize to try and address housing. That's tentatively scheduled now for September fourth, which is the Planning Commission's regular meeting date, the first Wednesday in September. And the entire Planning Commission, the entire city council is invited. We're also working on a list of about a half dozen other folks that we wanna have come participate. We're looking for working-class people that grew up here that are dealing with housing issues and, and would wanna be a part of that. And we've got five or six names of those that we're gonna go out and talk to. We're looking for contractors and realtors and developers that are involved in the housing trade. Obviously, we've got that somewhat covered with both Tim and Anton being a part of the process. But there's also a few other people that we're gonna talk to about that. And we're looking for some elderly experience in housing issues because we obviously, we know where there's a lot of that going on. So we're hoping to keep the group to about fifteen though and not more than that. So heads up that, that's scheduled for the fourth and it'll probably be six o'clock, I would guess, five, six o'clock. And you're all invited and hopefully you can all participate. And if you wanna have any input on other categories of folks that you'd like to see there, just let Patrick or I know and we'll work on it.
Anything else? Apart from hearing from a number of people around the community about issues du jour, I don't have a report. So, hearing nothing else, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, Chris.